Then you need six of them instead of three. So it's just twice as hard to do, but.
But just thinking.
But I would in terms of the image to the neighborhood.
I think from a neighborhood standpoint, that would be a huge difference.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Cause frankly, it's already a ready, it's already, people can already have their unit and then rental ADU. So.
Yeah, it would just let your, let your ADU be bigger essentially. You could opt into having a bigger ADU.
I think you want as much flexibility as possible because our lots are so different.
Yeah.
Architectural solutions are going to be critical to be able to have enough flexibility to make it work. I mean, a triplex and a single unit, a fourplex, whatever. I think just limiting into the number of maximum number of units on a lot makes sense, maybe four, but I think you ought to be able to have whatever, whatever combination that makes most sense for that property.
As, as a pilot program, I would like to experiment with something more than, than a duplex. I mean, I'd like to see if somebody wants to come forward with something that's four per site. Um, because it would, it would. I would, I'd, I'd like to go a little beyond a duplex. It doesn't feel like a big reach to me, but uh.
I agree. I flexibility, creativity. I, you also have to think what's going to work for the property unit.
Yeah.
Yeah. And as a pilot, and I think there was a speaker who talked about this being a model for other cities in the county. That's important to.
Laura, do you have what you need? It sounds like up to four is.
Yeah, I think up to, up to four with flexibility on what that building form would be within our normal expectations. Um, for design and setbacks and things like that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. So next after opt in. Uh, were there any questions on affiliated housing change? I think that one seems less controversial.
Agreed.
Then ADUs, JADUs is next.
Actually, can I ask a question? Do we assume that if we're doing opt-in, we're not doing SB nine or can we consider both? And the reason it up is again with Glen Oaks in mind, and if SB nine is already an option for the community, why not include it? What's the downside? If we can put some inventory in the moderate income category and take it out of Glen Oaks.
I'm very leery of changing our SB nine ordinance just because we have very little control under SB nine of what can be built. And if we liberalize it such that we make projects be economically viable in town. I don't know how you would only have a few of those projects. I think it can spiral out of control very quickly.
You don't think we can keep, we can have it in there with our ordinance? You can't, we can't have both.
We, we would have to liberalize our SB nine ordinance to, to make it economic to build any SB nine units.
Is that true, Laura?
I think that's true. Yes.
And if we did that, if we liberalize the ordinance to allow SB nine units to be built, then I suspect we would probably be making a lot of SB nine units be viable to be built. And then we could have all of the problems that are associated with that benign, which we currently don't face.
Okay.
I, 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 I don't. I, I'm not completely opposed to it. I just think it would be very, very difficult to thread that needle and get the, get the settings on the SB nine ordinance just right, that it's not too hot and not too cold, that Goldilocks SB nine is not going to be an easy target.
It's interesting. That aspect did not come up in the planning, because the planning commission, um, right, Laura, uh, the majority wanted SB nine. But we, they didn't at all discuss the limitations of our ordinance.
Yeah.
This aspect of it.
SB nine is, it's a real straightjacket and it takes away a ton of control. Um, and if we loosen things up such that, I mean, right now it's just, it's unlikely. I just don't believe any SB nine project is ever going to happen in Portola Valley. Cause it just doesn't make any economic sense. So, um, you know, we can, we can.
It's a good, it's a good point.
And it's always a potential fallback if we ever do, you know, hit a net loss and we have a hundred and eighty days trying to find some extra sites. Um, you know, looking at liberalizing SB nine may be an option to, to get there quickly, but um, it, it's, it's going to be really tricky to do that without going too far, I think.
Nope. It's a good point. Uh, I guess, you know, I think. Yeah. Just because it would, this, this, that aspect was not considered in the planning commission. So I assume they would have maybe thought differently if that had been part of their assessment as well.
Could be. Okay. Onto ADUs.
So the main questions around ADUs are whether you feel comfortable with the number that's proposed right now, um, which is ninety-two with the standard allocation formula. Um, and from what we've heard so far, staff would propose that we separate the ADUs and the JADUs for how we're keeping track of them. Because we do think there's value for the town in keeping track of them separately. Because we would probably need different programs to incentivize them in the future. If we find especially the JADUs are really successful. So we would like, uh, the staff would like to track them separately. We think that's a great idea. Um, we know that for HCD they count the same and they're allocated the same. Um, and so this is kind of, do you feel comfortable with all the incentives, the programs, the number, kind of the overall AD, ADU package? Um, does that feel right to you?
Um, so I, I, I would start off here and say, I, I think this ties in with the sunrise question to some degree. Um, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with where the numbers are now for our submission to HCD. Um, I would be uncomfortable claiming larger numbers upfront. Um, because I think it's just going to be a real uphill battle with HD to get them to agree to bigger numbers based on their guidance and, and everything we know about how they're going to review these. Um, that said, I am hopeful that we can exceed these numbers. Um, I think that there's pretty good indication just from the, the production rate that we've had over the last couple of years as we've liberalized our rules. That if we continue essentially at the same rate that we're going now, we will beat these numbers in at least some of the income categories. But I don't know how well that's going to go. Um, you know, we'll make our best effort to do that. If we combine that with the sunrise option on Ford Field. It allows us to see what we can do to outperform the numbers that we put into our plan for the first couple of years of the, of the cycle. Um, and if we truly are doing a great job on producing them and getting them populated and rented out at affordable levels. Um, it reduces the target number that we need for Ford Field. It gives us more flexibility for that project or, or the other projects that we're, that we'll be looking at. So. You know, the short version is I'm fine with the numbers as they are now for the plan. But I'm hoping that in the execution of the plan, we actually should be able to beat those numbers. And then free up, you know, not free up the requirement to maintain sites elsewhere.
I've been, I think the numbers that we have right now, I'm, I'm comfortable with. It's just, it's a, it's a little bit more ambitious than what are the, the base formula. It feels like a number that's sort of just a little more than what we started out with, but it's something that HCD will still buy for this, this iteration of it. I agree. I'd love to see more of our, I'd love to see more ADUs get built in for those to be actually be a meaningful part of the, a bigger part of the solution. I've just, you know, I'm, I'm skeptical. Um, both of them getting built and of them getting rented. Um, but, uh, but I'm, I'm willing to, I'm happy to. I'm happy to, I'd, I'd love to see more of them get built, but I think I'd rather stick with the numbers that the ninety-two number that we have in place right now.
There I am.
I think we should stick with ninety-two because our expert Laura has said that is the highest number that she can comfortably defend. And, um, sure, if we can do better. That's great. I'm skeptical because I think we can do better in terms of building them. But I would be very surprised if they would actually get rented out and get rented out below market. That's very, I mean, you have to be altruistic to do that.
I agree.
John.
Yes. Agree with staying with the numbers we have now.
Okay, Sarah.
So I've always said in the ad hoc housing element committee meeting that I'd be in favor of more at the moderate and above moderate. I completely agree that it's not a viable approach for the low and very low. Um, the problem then becomes the super annoying safe harbor equation that we have to stick to. I would love to be able to just increase that eight that's in the above mod up to like twenty and be able to decrease Glen Oaks. Um, I don't know, Laura, if, you know, it seems to me like that's not possible because we'd be breaking that. Um, and I don't know, I guess, you know, I, I'd be, I'm giving my feedback that I'd increase it at that level, but also knowing it may be impossible to do that because of the safe harbor rule. So.
So Laura, could you explain the safe harbor rule, maybe for those of us who haven't been in the ad hoc housing committee meetings? Um, is the safe harbor role that it has to be exactly thirty, 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 ten? Or is it that it can be no worse than thirty, 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 ten? Or do you have to provide justification for a, you know, deviating from that?
Um, these are excellent questions and I wish they were clear answers. So I'll, I'll do my best. Um, so as background, there was a regional study and then there was San Mateo. Um, more specific sort of retain refinement, San Mateo County refinement to it. And so they came up with two different scenarios and the committee considered both scenarios. And it's considered that if you don't use this, you're supposed to have your own justification. But they didn't say like you're saying, um, kind of no worse than this, right? Because I think what you're saying is we want to increase the higher numbers because I think those will be easier to produce.
Yeah. Because we have a history of producing them, frankly.
Yeah. You know, that makes so much more sense than the flip side of that, you know? It's, it's kind of like they're asking us to put a circle and a square. What were, you know, the, the, yeah. Anyhow, sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you there.
So I think this is something where you have to think about it on balance when you continue your conversation. Um, because they do, everything we've heard is that HCD considers the housing element on the whole. Um, and so if we're going to blaze a trail in one area, we may not want to blaze it in another one. Um, and so that's something for you to consider. Um, we certainly can try to make a case, um, for more, um, uh, above moderate ADUs. We really have to think about what our rationale is then and have to think about. They're going to expect some sort of data, I think. So it, we, we may need to back it up with something and brainstorm what that would be. Hard for me to think of that on the fly. Um, I mean, we can try. Um, we're just stepping outside of the formula.
I guess just given, you know, in our community, given property values, it's just so much more likely that they would be rented at the above mod. I don't know.
Right. And I think, I mean, it's, yeah, it's challenging because sometimes what they found in the more affluent communities is ADUs are, um, people use them for free. Like they let people live in them and people who would otherwise, people who are extremely low income that would otherwise be paying rent in another unit. And so that's the flip side of more of ADUs and more affluent communities. The problem is we don't have a sense of the numbers.
I just had an, an idea and you can tell me how stupid it is. Um, what if we keep the current ADU line where it's thirty, 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 ten? And then we have another line below it that we call bonus ADUs. That's like ten more above moderate units.
So we make our own equation.
Yeah. So we, we've, we have the, so we show them, look, you know, we're prepared. Cause really I think, you know, for those ADUs, we show we're, we're, we're going to produce all of these ones in the lower income categories. But we think through some of the programs that we have that we can also get ten extra above market rate ones, and those won't be the thirty, 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 ten ratio. They're just above market rate units or above moderate units.
And again, for me, the only reason to be doing this is to be able to.
Yeah, I, I have my eye on that too. Yeah.
Um, hard for me to problem solve this right now.
Yeah, no, I know. It's, it's.
I, I understand where you're, where you're going. Um, does any of the rest of my team out there, does anybody else have anything else to add to this Curtis, Carla, Cara? Oh, I'll see. No, it's hard. It's hard to solve. We, I don't know anyone else who's trying to, um, address it in this way.
Yeah, the. Laura, this is Curtis. I guess one of the issues is you've got the ninety units roughly that you're recommend saying that the town can achieve and that's pushing it. Where are, what would be the justification for the ten additional units? So basically you're pushing it over a hundred and you would need to have that justification uh, for doing so. You know, if, if you were to say, well, we looked at the thirty, thirty, ten and we actually it's a little different and put a little bit more in the above moderate, but you take some out of the lower income and very low, they might accept that within the overall number, but that doesn't. That's kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul because then you need to find more very low and low units.
It's like a circular. It's terrible.
Yeah. So you can shift the ratio, but not the total number is what you're saying is, is maybe acceptable to HCD. They're, they're going to be very dubious about increasing the total number of units though.
Yeah. Based on the justification that the town has right now, since you're already pushing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've included all the ADU programs that we can think of that would be reasonable for the town to implement. We already have in there.
But I do think, I do think there's an argument that our ADU production is repressed relative to other similar communities. I don't know who did that analysis that was looking, you know, at ADU production. Obviously we don't want to compare ourselves to, uh, Atherton for the obvious reasons, but like, why are we so far behind ADU production relative to Woodside, for instance? They have very similar topography issues and whatnot.
So I guess. Numbers are really high.
A question I have for the group is, would you all be willing to risk putting this out there and getting a rejection in order to see if it, it, it buys us, uh, the decrease at, at Glen Oaks? That's really the point of.
So, so I, I, I think we can come back to it maybe when we, when we talk in more detail about Glen Oaks, but I, how about, um, what if, what if for now we say, let's stick with these numbers. When we talk about Glen Oaks, we can see what it looks like, you know, what would we need to do in order to tweak that the way that we want to? And then, you know, if, if we need a, a couple from, uh, ADU production and a couple from the buffer and a couple from somewhere else, we, we'll, we'll get a better sense maybe when we actually talk about Glen Oaks of, of what we would need and how realistic we think that might be. Um, but it, it sounds like going above ninety would just be tough. And, and then, you know, all we'd be doing is kicking this problem down the road three months, and then we'd have to put Glen Oaks back on the table when they say, no, you can't have those ADUs. Um, and, and I think, you know, with a potential sunrise clause, if we outperform and we show that we actually did build the units, then, um, you know, we can reduce the number of units required at Glen Oaks with no net loss.
Well, but that it'll already be zoned. Once it's zoned, I think the cat's out of the bag, right? You can't unzone it.
Yeah.
Which is less of a concern, for instance, at town center because we're in control. I'm sorry, that Ford field, because we're on control of that property. Anyhow, I like your suggestion, Craig, to circle back versus make a final decision right now. I'm going to go get a glass of water.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any, have anything else on ADUs before we move on to the next section? Oh, okay. Um. Let's see, where does that bring us? Opt-in rezoning again? Didn't we do opt-in? We did. Um. Recommended buffer is next. Um, so on recommended buffer, you heard my thoughts on recommended buffer earlier, which is really that if you look at it line by line, I think some of the buffering, especially for the above moderate units could be reduced dramatically, um, which then reduces the requirement uh, for producing twenty odd units at Glen Oaks. Um, and the logic there is that ADU sites can't go away. So you can't have a net loss of ADU sites. It's not possible. You don't need to buffer against that. So, uh, similarly, you know, some of these other projects, if we have a high degree of confidence that the sequoias really will put a proposal forward that includes eighteen units for seniors. Um, that that's likely to happen, or you know, if they don't put the plan forward, they're not going to take it, they're not going to remove the site uh, from the inventory, then you know, we don't need to buffer those either. Um, the pipeline impending projects. Um, my understanding, Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, the timeline for the wedge review will be done before we need to file our housing element or right around the same time. So we'll know about those pipeline units at that point.
It'll be around the same time.
Yeah. So those pipeline units will either exist because they've been approved or they're getting very close to being approved, or we'll know that they're not getting approved. And then we need to find twenty-eight more units somewhere else, which will be a fun challenge. Um, but you know, if they exist, they don't need to be buffered. If they don't exist, then we've got a whole nother problem to solve uh, in finding those units. But again, you don't need to buffer them. They're either going to exist or they won't exist.
Craig, are you proposing that we figure this out tonight or that we submit it as is and then?
I, I think it's, it's that we submitted as is, but, uh, or maybe with, you know, some slight modification and a side note from staff to say we, you know, these, these numbers may change because we don't think the buffering is quite the way it needs to be to make sense for Portola Valley. And in our final submission, we will revise this and we'll give them as mu- as much guidance as we can in the near term. Um, but that, that's really our longer term goal is if we can eliminate the twenty units of buffering that we have right now for above moderate, moderate income and reduce that down to zero or close to zero. Take those twenty units out of Glen Oaks, then we only need to build six or seven units at Glen Oaks. Um, and that's a very, very different project from twenty-seven units. Twenty-seven units is incompatible with horse operation there. Seven units is potentially compatible with continuation of the horse operation there.
I love this idea. I guess I wonder though, Laura, can we do that? Can we, can we do this, do one buffer now and then do a, you know, relatively significant? I mean, it's not huge. Actually in numbers, it's not that big, right?
Exactly.
Um, like.
We give them a heads up now so they know it's coming.
Yeah. I mean, I think we would want to talk to them about it. Um, like I said, we'd be, we'd be blazing a trail. Um, but I understand the rationale because we're so small. I do have some concerns though about saying we want to, um, approach this buffer differently and then come back with it one less housing site. You know what I mean? I think that that could be a negative. Um, so just, you know, I'm kind of trying to think through the implications of that.
So I, I think the housing site would still be there. It would just have a lot fewer units because we don't need to produce twenty-seven anymore. We only need to produce seven.
Well, it would be, if it worked out, it would be if the leasee wanted to do affiliated housing.
Yep.
And Stanford was willing to agree to allow them to do affiliated housing, then it would move um, from a non vacant site down to an affiliated housing site and it would go from twenty-seven to some other number that's, you know, six or seven or something.
Yep. Wouldn't it likely move from above moderate income to one of the other, I mean, to the lower, very low income?
Well, we could leave it. They could be designated as above moderate and they just happen to lease them, lease them out for lower rent.
Right.
Mr. Mayor may make a comment just related to.
Yeah.
Your upcoming discussion on the Glen Oaks piece, you guys are starting to tease into that. It, it, I think it would be, um, potentially useful. Well, let me ask, let me ask this as a question. What, how would you like to engage with Stanford on what might be a substantial change related to um, the number of units? I'm sure that they've got a comment with close. I don't know that's appropriated twelve forty-five at night to open that up again, but um, you know, maybe when you, as we're getting there, we consider giving us some direction on a continued conversation without it being particularly directive and allow Laura to have that conversation with Stanford.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, we're, we're, we're on a, a timeline here for submitting this draft to be able to get the comments back to be able to then finally, you know, update our thing and resubmit it to get it certified by the date in January. Um, so, so yes, absolutely. I think we need to, you know, continue those conversations. Um, and, and you know, it, it is as, as Sarah, I think pointed out, it's a, a draft in big bold letters until it's final. Um, and at this stage, you know, we're putting our best draft out there, but it is subject to change as, as we work through all these details are coming on. Um, but I think it's, it's, it's a good idea for us to know what that direction is that we want to head in. Um, in terms of changes that we'd like to make, you know, in the final version. So generally is this concept sort of makes sense to you all of thinking about the buffering? And I, so I've just been focusing on above border. I, I actually think the same approach means we may need to buffer a little bit more in the very low income, um, and low income categories potentially. Um, but I think that, you know, we'll need to do some analysis there and, and look at what is the risk to, on each of these lines and figure out what does that mean in terms of the buffering? Um, but at, at all of the income levels, I think the, the, those ADU sites cannot go away, like unless the entire town gets designated very high fire severity zone or something, and we say you can't build any ADUs there, then, um, maybe they go away, but.
I have a question. Sorry, I'm going to interject here. Um, this will be in a very, people will not like this, but is there a possibility that we go through and we approve? You know, we get, go through all of these categories and we approve everything except what our buffer is. Well, that might be hard because the buffer impact.
Buffer is, the buffer comes out of the other lines. So.
Right, right. But I don't know. I guess what I'm getting at is I think this buffer idea is good. I think it, we, we need to do the number crunching. Obviously we can't do that at almost one o'clock in the morning your time. Do we postpone? Like, do we have, do we really need to get this approved tonight? Or do we get as far as we can and say, we're going to iterate on the buffer thing to see if we can get, you know, squeeze something out there instead of, I, I almost feel like that's a better approach versus going to HCD. You know, and, and saying, oh, we're going to come back in, in a second draft with a bit different buffer number that's going to change Glen Oaks. I don't know if I'm making sense at this point, but you know what I mean?
I, I, I do get what you're saying. I, I think I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, HCD realizes that this is a draft. I mean, that's why we submitted as draft, right? And I, are they generally expecting that the final version might have changes that are not merely responses to their comments? Or are they expecting that, you know, our draft would be our final submission if HCD has no comments?
Um, okay. I'm interested Curtis and Carla, the other communities you're working with have talked about this. My.
My perception has been that they expect this to be our our kind of final draft and that changes would be in response to their comments. That has been my perception. Curtis?
I agree with with Laura that, yeah, if they came back and said, we love this. We're, we're giving you an approval or their certification. I don't think they would be expecting you to come back. Or if they had kind of minor combat comments and then expecting the town to come back with significant changes to the numbers or sites.
That'd be weird.
That that would bring a lot more scrutiny than you probably want at that point.
So Laura, let me ask you this then. Yes.
I'm going to interrupt. Mary Ann wanted to make a comment.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I think it's a really interesting idea, but I I have, I have spoken to people at HCD. I know what they're like. They're going to see this as a smoke and mirrors from a rich community trying to to get rid of a housing site. I don't agree with it. I think we should go with the buffer that's there and move on. And I absolutely, we're going to approve this thing tonight. If we have to stay here till flipping six in the morning. No, I'm serious.
Laura, on that note, when do we, when do we need to submit this to the state by whether we approve it tonight or not? I mean, even if we approve it tonight, there's still a little bit of work before you can actually send it off. Is that right?
Yeah, we have, I would say we have about two weeks of work to do before we can send it. Carla, does that seem right to you? From after the, from after your meeting?
Okay, and that's without us throwing you the extra workload of saying recalculate all the buffers and whether or not we can tweak all this stuff.
Um, well, that accounts for some changes from you. I mean, we expected to make changes after this meeting. But what we don't know is when we sit down to try to do this, what the results are going to be.
Yeah.
And so if you, if the council wants to take action tonight, then we would need a structure like working with the subcommittee in order to finalize things and have that, you know, authorized by the council because we just don't know if this is going to work until we sit down and work on it.
Yeah.
I I'm just going to say I'm willing to do whatever it takes honestly to to sharpen the pencil on on the Glen Oaks situation. So I don't, I don't know what format that comes in. And maybe we need to just keep plugging through here and then see where we are. But if if it comes down to a buffer, there's a potential that this tighter analysis of the buffer could have that impact for Glen Oaks. I'm willing, you know, I think it's worth it personally.
I I do too. And frankly, it comes back for me to the purpose of this buffer. Our regional housing needs allocation is two hundred and fifty-three units, and that is what the state is hoping that we will produce. And the purpose of the buffer is to prevent us from falling into the no net loss penalty zone where we are suddenly faced with an enormous challenge of having to develop new zoning or find new sites in a three month period sometime in the next eight years. So, you know, I think Mary Ann's notion of this is just trying to, you know, remove a housing site or squeeze out of producing the units isn't the way that I view this. I view this very much as absolutely trying to make sure that we hit our RENA target as required by law. But that we're not adding on top of that units that we're making up, that Rena didn't think that we needed to actually plan for. Because the buffer, if we if we don't need the buffer, we don't need the buffer. That's that's kind of my view on it. And in in other areas, it's possible that in some of the other income categories, we may need bigger buffer through this analysis. And I think if we do, we should plan for that because I don't want to be in a situation five or six years or three years from now where we need to find additional sites for twenty VLI units because, you know, Ford Field, when the architect looked at it, didn't pencil out the way we thought it would. So we need to really be thoughtful on these buffer numbers and not just, I think, go with the state guidance, but really think about what do what buffer is going to make Portola Valley be safe against tripping over the no net loss penalties in the next couple of years. So what if we say for now, then do we want to take the approach of of creating a subcommittee to work with staff to refine, take this pencil, go through and refine with staff what we think appropriate buffer numbers are under this kind of model? And then potentially tweak the number of units there or you know, would we prefer to go with just what what staff has put in there with the current buffer numbers that are kind of twenty-one percent across the board?
Well, this is, if I can through the chair, this is intertwined with the Glen Oaks conversation.
Yeah.
Because I don't know that I I'm not hearing yet, and it's maybe it's out there, but I'm not hearing it consensus that there's an interest of taking the Glen Oaks off the list. And so I'm having trouble from your discussion differentiating those two issues.
So I've not heard from anybody a desire to take it off the list.
Okay, I'm sorry, to to try to make our best attempt to transition it from a full housing site into an affiliated housing project and maintain the horse facilities.
Right, to move it down one line on the site.
Yeah, into affiliated if Stanford was agreeable.
Yeah. So is is that, maybe this is then a good time to to transition into discussing Glen Oaks. What is the general feeling there? I think, you know, I heard that the Housing Element Committee was trying to maintain businesses and trying to maintain, you know, athletic sporting facilities. And, you know, Glen Oaks is both of those things. And I think it was overlooked because it's not, you know, it's not, people don't think of it as a business like a grocery store is a business. And they don't think of it as a sporting facility like a baseball field is a sporting facility. But it it really, you know, is both of those things. And I, I think there is potentially room for some housing there, but you know, this number of units would have to replace the the existing facility rather than sitting alongside the existing facility.
I think I also want to add to that just for context from the the Housing Element Committee. The other thing that had been discussed is the overall impact on like the the cumulative impact on Alpine Road. So if you have Ford Field, you have the wedge, and then now you're also going to have Glen Oaks. It 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 starts to add up. And then you've got Alpine in right there with all that, you know, it just, it's it's the cumulative effect is is exponential, I think. And then, of course, you know, there's the the preservation of rural character. So in addition to the businesses, I think those were the other two things that were brought up in support of Glen Oaks.
Mary Ann, are you raising? No, you're drinking. Do you have any thoughts, Mary Ann, since you're?
Yeah, I have thoughts.
Yep.
Why would Stanford want to do a seven unit project there? That, you know, it's more economically feasible to do more units.
I don't think it would be Stanford. I think it would be the tenant.
Pardon me?
I think it would be the tenant, not Stanford doing it. It would be an affiliated.
And the tenants of Ford to do a project. How does that work if they don't know the land?
They would have to get permission from Stanford to do it. My understanding of the situation is that there had been previously unpermitted housing units somewhere on that site. I don't know the details of it. And so there has been some discussion in years past about units there for their workers. And so it would it would mean they would have to, the tenant would have to be interested and willing to do it, and Stanford would have to approve it.
Right.
So for this to fly at all, I think is going to involve, as Jeremy suggested, some discussion in the next two weeks with Sanford and the tenant to find out whether this is even feasible. If it's not, then, you know, then it's not feasible and and we're left with kind of what we have now. But I think given the level of discomfort in the community and my own discomfort with the current plan, if we can improve it, I would be inclined, as Sarah said, to put that work in in the next two weeks to try and make it better.
I guess the other thing I would say is best case scenario to me is workforce housing there. Second best case is significantly lower density for for Stanford development. Like, there's something between nothing and twenty-seven. Just from a density standpoint. So if we have to lose Austrian, we don't have to go up to twenty-seven there, hopefully, is my point of view.
So how does that affect tonight?
That's what I don't understand.
So, so I
what we're, what I'm thinking, and then maybe Cara can chime in here. So maybe we downgrade Glen Oaks to six units of affiliated. And then do that outreach to to Stanford and to the lease fee to the tenant. And see if that, you know what I mean, is feasible and see if we can make that stick. And then Cara, could you talk about your thoughts about do we have to do the rezoning if it's just as a buffer? And not like on our actual list? Like, do you have any thoughts about that?
Right. I I don't think we need to do the rezoning at the time in connection with the housing element, that if we just identify it as a possible buffer site. And then if it's needed during any of the annual progress periods, we've identified that site, and then we have the hundred and eighty days to rezone it. So I think that solution would work. So what, so do you understand what we would do?
We do the work now so that if we do have a net loss, then we know where we're getting those extra units. It's by rezoning Glen Oaks.
Yes. Because if we, what we want to do is if if we don't think that we are going to use Glen Oaks or need it, we wouldn't want to do the the rezoning now because we can't we can't, you know, undo the zoning now under under the Housing Accountability Act. So I think the plan would be to designate it as an affiliated housing site. You don't need rezoning for that. And then if you reach the no net loss trigger, then at that point you would rezone it.
Gotcha.
What, how many units? Affiliated housing site at how many units?
At whatever we need to make up the net loss.
But for tonight, what would that number be?
Uh, maybe six. The the only, the only issue with that, Laura, is that the affiliated housing units probably will not be above moderate. They'll probably be lower income. And
Well, they could be. They don't need to be restricted. And then they could just happen to leave them out at lower rate.
Right.
Yeah, why? Because like in Sequoias and Christchurch, they're at above mod and they're affiliate housing.
They could, they could, you know, say they're unrestricted and then they just happen to charge below market rent.
Right.
Yeah, that works. Because there wouldn't be deed restricted units. They would just be up to them to rent at whatever rates they rent at.
Yep.
My only thing is like on my spreadsheet here, when I change Glen Oaks to six, we're down to zero buffer at above mod.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it may be that it needs to be seven or I I think we need to to do that work to do the math, figure out if it's six or seven or eight or what what the number is based on a buffer that is a reasonable buffer.
But I I think more importantly, we have to find out what the tenant may be interested in building, right? We know they have some interest in building something. But there's a big cost difference between five and eight units.
Yes. Yep. So what I would, what I would guess then is we maybe have a subcommittee to work with staff to go have these conversations with Stanford and the tenants to do some more thinking on how to refine the buffer and exactly what number of units we think works. If it doesn't pencil out, we can fall back to what's there in the draft element now.
Or maybe just a lower number at Glen Oaks.
Wh- whatever we can make pencil out.
Yeah.
And if, you know, if the, I mean, the worst case is absolutely nothing pencils out, and we realize that, yeah, we do need that buffer, and then we keep the number that's there. If we can tweak it down, hopefully substantially, but worst case, you know, only a little bit. Then we can do that work in the next two weeks before submitting it. And when you say two weeks, do you mean two weeks or do you mean a little bit less than two weeks? In other words, if we wanted to bring the work of that subcommittee back to the council for a hopefully quick ratification two weeks from now, although we're planning, I think, to not have that council meeting. But is is that a possibility that we could, you know, after we've done the work, bring it back? Or would it be better to authorize the subcommittee to do the work that's necessary and not have to bring it back?
This is a situation where every day will matter at the other end.
Yep.
Do you know what I mean? And so we can, we can take an extra day and two. That's totally fine. We can do that. It's just a matter of we're shortening the time in the fall when we get the comments back because then the comments will be back at the end, very end of October.
Yeah.
Instead of a week earlier. And so what we would have to do is really make the most of that meeting with HCD and set, really kind of set a plan and a schedule. And we would really have to hold to that schedule. We probably have to set all the meetings in advance. And just say, no extra meetings, no, you know what I mean? We have to make it. So I I think that's the kind of implications of taking a little extra time now.
And you weren't planning to take any time off during Thanksgiving or Christmas or New Year's anyway, right?
No, I mean, I didn't last year, so.
Hey, guys, just to toss out another idea, what about like a special council meeting just for like one hour just on this topic in a couple of days after we're able to do some due diligence? Radio silence.
No, from a staff point of view, we
I don't like it. I don't like
Do it.
Yeah, I I think it's going to be tough to, I mean, if we have another council meeting on the housing element, you know, I'm sure we will get a lot of public comment again. And so maybe that we have an intention of doing an hour long meeting. I'm not sure that it would end up turning out that way. So my my inclination would be if if we can figure out kind of some boundaries around what we're comfortable with staff and a subcommittee working on that we can set that up today and kind of fire and forget and and approve it and let the let the subcommittee and staff figure it out and submit a draft.
That's even better. That was a possibility.
We're trying to save at least some horses at Glen Oaks. Is that right? That's, that's what you want to do. Okay. So, I mean, then we just got to figure out.
So, so could, could, could riffing on that, then, could this the council approve a subcommittee just on those two topics and authorize them on those two topics? Is that what you're suggesting?
Something along those lines, yeah.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
I'm in the minority here, so, you know, you've got four votes for it.
Well, I didn't hear from Jeff. Jeff, does it sound reasonable?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so it sounds like
Only with the intent of Glen Oaks, just exhausting the possibilities there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, do we want to formally create that subcommittee? I would suggest Sarah and myself to work on it. Since we seem particularly energized about this.
I'm really energized.
I'm really energized. My family's gonna be waking up in about an hour, but that's okay. Okay, but this is um, that, this is the Glen Oaks, the numbers and the buffer analysis that we've been talking about. Yes. Those two, because.
Together, yeah, I think, I mean, the the purpose of the one is the other, so. Okay, um, let's see, I'm scrolling through my thing now to the next. Item, where are we?
We're on the sunrise in the gateway. Ford Field Open Space.
Yep. Okay, anybody wish to speak on sunrise and gateway? I, oh, go ahead, Tara.
Go, um, so. I think the sunrise reflects the spirit of the ad hoc housing element committee. We went around and around in that last meeting. And basically, everybody said they want. Ford Field as the last, 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 last resort, so although they didn't articulate it in a sunrise. Spin, that's the intent of, I think, what we heard from that group. Um, and so. Um, you know, I think that's what the community wants, generally speaking, like if we don't have, you know, if we can find another path, that's great. And if we wanna, you know, let's see what we can do. Um, you know, to turn over every rock on some miracle lot that's gonna fall from the sky or ADUs, which. Honestly, I'm skeptical on both, but why not try? Um, so. Uh, and then I think for me also on the gateway, it it, you know, uh. Laura, when did we have that meeting with Alta Housing back in February or March? Um, at that meeting, this concept of Ladera came up. So uh, I don't know that if that came from you, Laura, or where that came from, but um, you know, we've been conceptually talking about it since then. And so to me, it does make sense to think about. Ladera. Um, and exactly as as Laura had, I'm I'm losing my ability to talk exactly Laura's approach in her presentation to have. That whole area considered as a whole. So for me, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Jeff?
Yes, I I. I'd look. I'm, I'm, I do not like the idea of using the open space for this, but I I I mean, I I think. It's hard to see us working without using that site, so, but but I'm happy to to take as much time as we can afford to find an alternative. I I am skeptical, but I I'm I'm willing to give it a try.
Okay, John?
Hey, Dad, they're using the open space, but um. I think it's good to take a little more time, as much time as we can. If we've got to um, make sure that the situation is thoroughly analyzed.
Mary Ann?
So does this mean that the site still, the, yeah, it stays on the list?
It stays on the list. What we're talking about is two things. One is a three-year sunrise. Which would mean that um, development, by development, I assume that means shovels in the ground, not necessarily the the. Planning work or design work around the project could potentially. Begin before that, and we may. Change the number of units, or we may realize we don't need it at all and abandon that design work, but um. What I understood from development in the staff report means. Starting to dig. Is that right?
Um, excuse me, um, well. I would recommend that we, we could take a little bit of time with no action. But then probably in the second year, we would have to start. Um, the detailed feasibility analysis that I was um, talking about.
Yeah.
Um, to to determine how the site would be developed. With the assumption, we'd have to be making the assumption that it's going to be. And be doing all of that work, and then there'd be a final decision point. Okay, nothing else has come up in those two years. We we have to go forward now. This could present challenges for securing. An affordable housing developer or the timing, and so um, the tax credit. Has its own timeline. And so um, you have to kind of sync up your projects to those tax credit timelines, and I'm not an expert in that. But I know that it can take, you know, four to six years. To really um, get these kinds of projects, get all the financing and everything together. And so we, I don't want to write the housing element in a way that limits that potential to find the right partner.
Got it, but a three, a three-year sunrise as is in the current dra- or. I guess it's an adjustment to the current draft. Um, but you think that that could work and still satisfy the constraints that you're talking about?
Yeah, and I would not. Excuse me, I would not recommend that we describe it as the sunrise, the language that we're using. What I would recommend is that we just put it in as a site, but on the timeline, on the objectives portion of it. But put the timeline out, right? So we'd be focused on ADUs the first year, right? And then the second year, we'd start feasibility for the site, and then going into the third year, we'd make decisions about how we're going forward.
Yeah, and if we have. If we have net gain units by then, then we may realize we don't need it, or we can scale it back and proceed or not proceed as necessary.
Because then we still have five years.
Yeah.
It's sort of like an internal sunrise, like. External, it's not external.
I'm hearing three years and two years. I'm hearing three years and two years. Which is it?
I I recommend two years. I don't, I think that going into the third year is gonna be a stretch for effective um, planning and and finding a partner and and being successful.
Okay, for the record, I want to state that this is our only true affordable. Housing development where we could actually bring people in at, from the lower incomes. And house them in a beautiful place and give them a completely different life. Where children could ride their bikes on the trails and they could play in the creeks and they could go to our schools. So I would be very disappointed if this project didn't happen. But if you can configure the lot. To fit it in and keep the trees. Great.
Yeah, I I think that's one of the benefits essentially of doing a a sunrise period or, you know. Recognizing that we're not gonna actually be beginning construction on this for many years. Is that it gives us time to do a lot more of that planning, and especially in combination with the gateway. Concepts of. Broadening the site and, you know, looking at, can we reconfigure? The baseball diamond in the parking lot, keeping those functions. But maybe arranging them slightly differently, maybe even improving the baseball field, which we've been talking about adding bathrooms and other facilities there to to. Make that even better than it is now. Um, I think it just, it gives us the flexibility to spend the time to really think through that stuff before. We engage with, you know, an actual developer who, for them, you know, time is money a lot more so than it is for us. Um, so I I I see a lot of benefits to um, a short. What we're calling sunrise period, but I agree, describing it some other way is probably a good, good plan. Um, so I I'm in favor of both the gateway and the two-year sunrise.
I think the other benefit of it is, you know, we've heard so much from the community for many, many months that there's this. Um, untapped demand for ADUs.
Yeah, it could be that there is.
Let's see it, you know?
Yep.
Let's see it.
Be that there is, and if there is, that's great. Um, if not, then, you know, we don't. Run into a no net loss problem where we're, we're screwed again. We have a plan.
I will quote from Andrew Pierce at our recent equity meeting last night. He said. People of lower economic status do not necessarily want to live. In the back of someone's house in a remodeled pool house. And that's all I have to say.
Yep. Okay. Um. So I think there is broadly agreement on that. What is next, Laura? Is there anything left?
That's all the topics that we um, asked you to cover.
Okay.
So should I, should I try to do a a little bit of a recap of what I think this, the direction is for staff?
Yes, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. So, um. For the opt-in, we have consensus around keeping it, but with stronger, we're using the word guardrails. Um, we talked about. Um. Four. Units per lot. As I think where we landed, um, leaving flexibility for the design attached or detached units. Um, the language around calling it a pilot was kind of starting to come up. So we would think about what language do we want to use to describe this? Um, so it can be perceived as something that the um, community is trying out to see if it fits in the community. Um, I think that would be well received to think about, we're trying something other than just single-family homes. Um, everywhere. So then staff would develop that language. Um, and then in terms of the process, it sounded like there was um. Interest in maintaining a, you know, a design process involved in that. So there would still have to be some planning commission action and some kind of design process, so we'd be working through some of the details of that. Um, and changing some of that language. Then for ADUs, it sounds like everyone is comfortable. Um, reasonably with leaving it at ninety-two units. But if we could come up with some rationale in combination with the other. Um, things we're working on to increase the above moderate a little bit. Then people would have some comfort around increasing the above moderate number. If we could come up with a way to do that, so then staff, our team would be thinking about if there's any way to do that. Then um, for the buffer. We're gonna look into structuring the buffer. On the basis of what's really needed as opposed to using a percentage formula. We're gonna work with those numbers and see if we can um, come to a result that we think would benefit. The town in terms of the real meaning of the net loss law that would actually protect the town in the future. And then make sure we can present a rationale to HCD. And then for Glen Oaks, there is an interest in. Seeing if Glen Oaks could work with as an affiliated housing site instead of a full-scale development site. So outreach to Stanford and outreach to the tenant to see if they're interested in doing that. And approximately how many units? Um, if they're interested, both parties were interested in in considering that, how many units could be considered? Then um, a subcommittee of Greg and Sarah, the mayor and the vice mayor. To work with staff to look at both of those things, the buffer in Glen Oaks and the interaction between them. Um, so that we could see if um, the numbers still work after we try to apply both of those things. Um, for the sunrise, um, support for. A two-year internal sunrise. Um, so we would actually be drafting the language to just say we'd be starting later. Um, we would not make it sound contingent um, on anything. And then introducing the gateway land use classification. For all of the Ford Field, Open Space, Field and Parking Lot Site, all that whole one parcel. And also the church site across the street, planning on, planning for those. Um, doing probably not much in the first year of the housing element cycle. Planning for the gateway in the second year of the housing element cycle. And then um, being able to go forward with the project in the third year unless something else has come up. That we don't know what to, that we can't anticipate right now.
And and working closely with Todd and whoever else from Little League to make sure everybody understands that, even though we're talking about expanding the. Project, it's not. Removing the softball or uh, field, it's just potentially relocating it or adjusting it.
Okay, and then from a staff point of view, um, if we're gonna have the subcommittee to work on those two issues. It would benefit staff to be able to run past that same subcommittee, any other small issues that we run into in implementation of your direction.
Okay, does, I see a lot of nodding, um, which may be because everybody's falling asleep or maybe because of agreement, so. Let me go around and just check with everybody um, individually that what Laura summarized sounds correct. Mary Ann?
It sounds correct. I still do not support the buffer in Glen Oaks solution.
Okay, John?
It sounds correct.
Jeff?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I also agree. Um, Cara, what kind of action do we need to take here? Do we need to formally create the subcommittee, appoint the members? Uh, and authorize staff to submit the draft to HCD after the work that has just been described has been. Uh, approved by the subcommittee?
That's perfect, yes.
So is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion, whoops.
Moved by Sarah?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jeff. Um, Melissa, if you are still with us, could you call the role, please?
Council member Derwin?
Yes.
Council member Alves?
Hi.
Council member Richards?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Mayor Hughes?
I.
Motion carries.
Mister Mayor, may I make a suggestion on the next item that we uh, move it to August tenth?
Um, let me, I've forgotten at this point what the next item is.
The priorities we.
Yes.
We think we're.
There's no objection from the rest of the council, then um, yes, I would move that to our next meeting. I see no objection. Okay, um, and that brings us to Council Liaison Committee Regional Agencies Report. I'm also happy to bump that to our next meeting if there's no objection.
Look how many I have. You wanna bump it to the next meeting when I won't be here.
Next time. Town manager report, Jeremy, do you have anything brief for us?
I have no report.
Okay. Um, oh, sorry, I need to take public comments on um. All these items that we're bumping, so let me uh, open public comment on items. If anybody'd like to speak on items seven, B, eight, or nine. Uh, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised. Is there anybody left in the schoolhouse?
Nope. We're empty.
Um, written communications, we have the digest of July seventh. Any comments on the digest from July seventh? No, uh, is there any public comment on this item? I see none. Um, so that brings us to item eleven. Would anybody like to move adjournment?
Move a German.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all for sticking with this tonight. Um, it is rare.
Especially the vice mayor, especially the vice mayor.
Especially the vice mayor.
I just wanna give a shout out.
Can do it.
Four thirty.
I love being described young. That is the best. I wanna give a special shout out um, to Laura and Cara. I'm sure that you guys wanted this thing to be totally done tonight. And I know we just added more work, um, and I apologize. Um, you guys are awesome and you've done such incredible work throughout this process, so. Um, I just wanted to close with that.
Yeah, and I would also like to uh, express appreciation for the twenty members of the public who have stuck with it through the end here as well on uh, Zoom. So hopefully that they're still with us. They haven't just passed out in front of their computers. Um, but thank you all for all of your participation um, to date, and as you know, this is just the draft, so there's more yet to come. So with that, thank you all and good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.